You're at a meeting of the Howard's Planning Board, scheduled to start at 6:30. This is to inform you that with regard to recording and taping, as required by law, the town may audio or video record the meeting and is. Any persons intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. Anybody? Thank you. First matter on our agenda is PB 2019-22, Ronald M. Rumandino and Lisa Stoker as owners seek approval of a site plan review special permit and special permit for mixed use in village commercial overlay with waivers. The application proposes a 930-plus or minus square foot commercial addition, conversion of the second floor from residential use to commercial use, and maintaining an existing residential dwelling unit at the rear of the building. The property is located at 521 Route 28, MAP 14, Parcel P3A, in the C-V and V-C overlay districts, and is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard's 325-51 point I, I'm sorry, 51 point L, 51 through 51M, and 55. This is a matter that was continued from September 10th. Mr. Rumandino?
No, on their behalf, they did request that the application be allowed to be withdrawn without prejudice. They're going to be making some changes to the plan after meeting with staff. They do request in addition a waiver of the filing fee as long as they file within 365 days, and staff does recommend that.
Somebody make a motion to allow them to withdraw.
So I move that we vote to permit PB 2019-22, Ronald M. Rumandino and Lisa Stoker as owners, to withdraw without prejudice their application for a site plan review special permit, and special permits for mixed use in village commercial overlay district with waivers, and further state that we waive the filing fee if they refile within 365 days.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And so the motion is allowed. Next is PB 2019-32, John E. Peanut and Thomas J. and Jody C. Blute as owners care of Kirin J. Healy, PLS, seeking approval of a three-lot modification of a definitive subdivision with waivers including one panhandle lot pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard's 325-18Q and Mass. General Law's Chapter 41, 81K through GG. Property located 1 and 2 J's Path, MAP 72, Parcel C1-1 and C1-2 respectively, in the RR zoning district. Matter continued from September 24th, 2019. Board will hear from Peanut and Blute and all their representatives.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Kirin Healy. I'm a land surveyor with BSC Group. With me tonight is Mr. Peanut, one of the owners of the property. Back in 2002, the planning board allowed the subdivision to be created, and waivers were granted at that time. We are here tonight to look for a modification of some of those waivers and the creation of a third lot, a panhandle lot, if you will. The panhandle lot basically will be in between these two existing houses that exist on the subdivision. The whole area of the property is 7.4 acres, so it's a good-sized piece of property. This lot right here would be over 40,000 square feet to do Lot 2A. We are looking, the primary waiver we're looking for is the construction of the roadway. The driveway as it is right now is wide enough to handle two vehicles. That's in the photograph that, you saw a photograph of my truck and Mr. Peanut's truck side by side. To show that there is adequate access for vehicles to go side by side on this property. Other than that, we'd be glad to-
But I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the lot that you want to create-
Yes.
It does not show on that plan.
It does.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
This lot right here-
Okay, okay. Thank you.
There's also a big one up on the screen.
My apologies for interrupting.
Lot 2A is shown on that one right there. If I could just-
If you talk, Kirin, no one's going to hear you because you don't have a microphone.
So, um-
Sorry.
Lot 3A and Lot 1A are where the existing homes are on the property. This is a re-subdivision of the property where we can fit it in another third lot. It's a panhandle lot, but it meets all the criteria for a panhandle lot with the planning board requirements. Anything else? I'd be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Peanut. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Anybody here on the board have any questions?
Could we have Charlene's-
I'm sorry. I keep doing that.
That's all right. You've got Mary to keep you on the street. They are requesting several waivers, which Kirin ran through. In addition, the town surveyor has reviewed this and has indicated that the project is located within a Zone 2 wellhead protection area and is proximal to a certified Vernal Pool. The subdivision appears to create a lot that has the potential to discharge to a critical area, therefore, development on the new lot created will be required to comply with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Mass. DEP Stormwater Handbook. It is recommended that all storm water generated from the development of the new lot be treated and discharged on the subject property with storm water best management practices as described in the Mass. DEP Stormwater Handbook. Conservation, building, fire, highway, and police all have no concerns. The health, they reviewed this on the 10th of August, and the filing, the following notes are to be added to the plan. In fact, I think they're already there. Limiting lots to one bedroom per 10,000 square feet and the locusts to tie into municipal water once it becomes available. Regarding my comments, at this time, I really have no concerns with the modification or any other waivers requested. I do want to note that the applicant did provide the certified mailing lists. That has been done.
So-called green cards?
So-called green cards. The municipal liens have been received. Keep in mind, the staff report was done for the meeting-
I understand.
-two weeks ago, and I didn't have time to update it. On the modification plan, Note 3, there is a statement saying that a covenant will be filed with the subdivision or with the plan. However, they have noted that they are requesting a requirement, so if the board is so inclined to grant a waiver from the need for a covenant, which I don't believe that you actually need a covenant in this case, that would have to be removed from the plan prior to endorsement. Also, within the notes, number one references Lot 1, 2, and 3. However, the lot, the plan itself says 1A, 12, or 2, 1A, 2A, and 3A, so that's going to need to be corrected on the plan prior to endorsement. It's not a strong issue, and it is recommended that an additional comment be included in the decision as well as noted on the plan, that storm water generated by the new dwelling, grading, or driveway shall be captured within the new lot by either dry wells or rain gardens, which would suffice the Mass. DEP requirements.
And would we require them to have those on the, on the plan that they submit?
No, it's something that they would have to do when they go to design the house on that property.
Okay.
It would be on the plan as well as in the decision, so anyone purchasing that property would know that. Generally, when a building permit comes through, I review it, or the town planner reviews it, to see if it complies with all requirements that may be imposed by the planning board. So there are checks and balances.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
What is the frontage?
Where is the frontage?
Is that the shape factor line?
No, the frontage is this section right here.
And that's at 72 feet?
The 72 feet is the length of the neezment line. The frontage is the 50.50 line along the act.
Okay. And what, what is the zoning on that?
It's asking for relief under the provision for a panhandle.
And the minimum panhandle frontage is 50 feet.
Actually, it's 35 feet. Sorry.
Anybody else on the board? Anybody in attendance who wishes to be heard or have any questions? Can you step to the microphone and identify yourself, sir?
Sure.
No, back behind there. That's it.
Well, I haven't done this before. We're one of the neighbors, and the only question I have is, there was some question some years back in 2012-
I'm sorry. Could you give us your name?
I'm sorry, Michael O'Gorman. I live in 10 Tucker's Way, and this is my wife, Marie.
Let's hope you and the applicant's counsel aren't from the same part of Ireland, but go ahead.
Could be close. The only issue I had, being a physician, is that there was some discussion back in 2012 that in the water supply, there was coliform or E. coli found, and we had our water checked the year before was normal, and the year later in 2012, and it was normal. But there was some discussion around that property at that stage. It was some E. coli or coliforms in the, in the water system. Now, we're going to be adding another septic system to a lot that's being manufactured, and that's the only concern I have for the water and the system that's already a little under pressure.
I'm sure he, the owner of the property, wouldn't be granted a permit to, to build a, a system if there was that concern, I assume.
They have to demonstrate that they got potable water.
Yeah.
So when the, when you mentioned the 2,000 gallons per day per lot, the other two lots have already been shown to be compliant with that, or is it just the, the new home will have to be compliant? What, do we know if the other two lots already meet that standard?
If I might, it's one bedroom per 10,000 square feet of land. The other two lots that already have houses do comply with that one bedroom per 10,000 square feet, which is the standard under Title 5, under, under Massachusetts requirements.
And that refers to the lot shall have a total septic flow of less than 2,000 gallons per day? That's what I'm referring to. If you look at the three attachments to the, there's, you know, fully compliant septic systems, should town water become, but above that is the lots have a total septic flow of less than 2,000 gallons per day. Do the other two homes on that lot meet that standard?
If I could answer that, a typical bedroom is 110 gallons per day, so 2,000 gallons qualifies for 18 bedrooms. Between the three lots, there are not 18 bedrooms. The new lot, which has just over 50,000 square feet, will have a maximum of five bedrooms based on that square footage requirement, so it would not be, combined those three lots could not be over the 2,000 gallons.
If you know, how about Lot 1A and 3A where there are currently existing dwellings? How many bedrooms in each of those?
Mr. Peanut, how many bedrooms? Four?
I have three.
You have three in yours. So there's three in Mr. Peanut's house.
Okay.
And if I might, the Board of Health will check that whenever they have a subdivision and a request for a new house. If there were stipulations imposed by the Board of Health, they will look at those when they're reviewing a new house for neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Okay? Anybody else on the board have anything further?
If I might, I beg your pardon, and I'm glad Mr. O'Gorman brought this up. The Board of Health letter dated the 20th of, of August does indicate the lot shall have a total septic flow of less than 200 gallons per day. Two, town, should town water become available, the dwellings shall abandon the private wells and connect to the public water supply. And three, fully compliant septic systems are required to serve the dwellings. Those are the three conditions that need to be noted on the plan before endorsement can take place.
Okay. You understand?
Yes, and some of those notes are already on the plan.
Anybody on the board have anything further? Yes, ma'am.
I'll just throw you to Charlene. Do those also need to be noted in our conditions?
Yes.
If I could just clarify one thing, Charlene, you said 200 gallons?
2,000 gallons today.
2,000 gallons.
2,000. It's been a really long day, so if I'm a little punchy this evening, I truly beg your pardon.
May I, may I request that letter for the motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
As long as I get it back.
Yes.
Okay, do we have anybody else? You have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to add something to the document?
Yeah.
Which doesn't need to be in the document. It's my question. It doesn't need to be up here.
No.
Okay. Do you have to, can I flip this for a second? You have the old staff report.
Okay. I move to adopt the-
You need to close the public hearing if you-
We did.
We did.
Or did you? Sorry. So it's going to actually go there?
Yep. Thanks. So, I move that we adopt the following findings of fact for the panhandle lots. I move that we adopt and approve the following findings of fact. One, lot frontage and lot width within the panhandle portion is 35 feet wide. Two, the length of the panhandle portion is significantly less than 300 feet. Three, suitable access is provided within the panhandle, and the access is wide enough and otherwise satisfactory for a driveway. And four, the panhandle lot meets the shape number requirements.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any others?
So I further move that we adopt the following findings of fact related to the definitive subdivision. One, said subdivision is for residential, for residential uses is permitted in the R-R zoning district and the W-R overlay district. Two, said subdivision does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, all lots demonstrate compliance with minimum dimensional requirements for frontage, area, and shape. And four, that all Board of Health requirements, as detailed in the July 20-
August 20th.
On the August 20th, letter from the Board of Health shall be met.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? And-
So I move to approve the following waivers from the subdivision rules and regulations pursuant to Section 400, Article 2. One, Section 400-10 subdivision filing D, open parentheses, 1, close parentheses. Two, 400-11 subdivision review procedure D, open parentheses, Sections 1 and 2, and 1, and F, 1-5. Three, Section 400-12 design standards for roadways. A, subsections 1, 2, 4, and 5. B, subsections 1 and 2, and subsection C2. Four, Section 400-13 design standards for utilities. A, subsections 1 through 6, and B, subsections 1 through 3. And finally, five, Section 400-14 requirement, required improvements and specifications for construction. A, subsections 1 through 3. B, subsections 1 and 2. E, subsections 1 and 2, and J, J through O.
Second?
Second.
You did. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion for waivers is approved.
And finally, I move to approve with conditions PB 2019-32, John E. Peanut and Thomas J. and Jody C. Blute for a three lot modification of a definitive subdivision with waivers including one panhandle lot pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81K through GG, and Sections 400 of the Code of the Town of Howard for property located at 1 and 2 J's Path, MAP 72, Parcel C1-1 and C1-2 respectively, in the R-R zoning district as shown on a plan entitled modification plan, definitive subdivision plan of land, J's Path in Howard's, Massachusetts, dated July 22nd, 2019, revision date August 14th, 2019, prepared by BSC Group, scale 1 inch to 40 feet, sheet 1 of 1. The following conditions are imposed. A, storm water generated by the new dwelling, grading, or driveway shall be captured within the new lot, Lot 2A, by either dry wells or rain gardens, and shall be so noted on the plan. And B, that the subdivision will comply with all of the requirements of the Board of Health, included in the August 20th, 2019, letter from Board of Health Director Megan Eldridge to Mr. John Peanut.
And shall be so noted on the-
And shall be so noted on the plan.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Matter is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Good luck.
That were yours.
Next matter is the Davenport Companies. Applicant with respect to via, via care of Filippo Scollomidi, PLS, representative of the State of James G. Masaline, as owner, seeks approval of a four lot definitive subdivision including 1, 10, and a lot pursuant to Chapter 325-18Q and 400 of the Code of the Town of Howard and Mass. General Law's Chapter 41, Paragraph 81K through GG. Property is located at 75 Headwaters Drive, MAP 81, Parcel C1, in the RR zoning district. Matter has been continued from September 24th. Mr. Davenport or, I'm sorry, Mr. Davenport Companies, are their representatives?
Yes. Good evening. Phil Scollomidi with Ryder and Wilcox. Here tonight with, as you mentioned, the definitive subdivision prepared for the Davenport Companies. Here with Christian Davenport next to me, and I'll describe our situation. The subdivision is situated on the south side of Headwaters Drive and also situated on the westerly side of the Cape Cod Rail Trail. The division creates four lots. It is accessed by a proposed 40-foot-wide private way, the length of which is 583 feet long. It's, the proposed way is situated on the easterly side of the old Brewster Harrowich Road, which is an ancient way. The site distance where the proposed road meets Headwaters Drive is adequately met with 235 feet looking westerly and 322 feet looking easterly. The road design calls for a 20-foot-wide paved roadway with 1.5 foot, foot and a half berms, paved berms on each side. The road ends in a turnaround, a paved turnaround, which is 90 feet in diameter, and it is proposed to have a planted island within the middle. The grades on the proposed roadway, they vary from 2% to 8%. Road runoff is designed for a 25-year storm event, which, as is required by the subdivision rules and regulations. There are three sets of catch basins that will collect runoff, and they'll direct it to subsurface leaching basins. Drainage calculations were supplied along with the filing. As you might have seen in the notes from Charlene, the town engineer, Griffin Ryder, had extensive comments regarding matters that pertain to the proposed roadway. Earlier last week, a representative and engineer from Ryder and Wilcox met with Griffin Ryder and to talk about adjustments that needed to be made to the plan and profile. They came to agreements. We addressed his concerns, and the revised roadway plan and profiles satisfied Mr. Griffin's concerns.
Bill, do you want to hand those out?
Yes. I've got some recently revised calculations that, and plan and profile that Ryder's reviewed. And I'll just, forgive me, I'll bore you with a few of the numbers. Lot 1 contains 40,100 square feet. It has 340 feet of frontage and a shape factor of 20.12. Lot 2 has 40,747 square feet, 217 feet of frontage, and a shape factor of 15.96. Lot 3 has a total area of 50,819 square feet and a shape factor of 21.16. Lot 4 has panhandle access, reduced frontage. It has a total area of 46,061 square feet, 45,094 square feet excluding the panhandle. It has a shape factor of 20.17. There's a environmental report was submitted to the Board of Health. It was prepared by JM O'Reilly and Associates. We have met with the Board of Health at one of their regularly scheduled meetings. The board will require that all lots are to be served by town water and that there will be no waivers permitted when developing the lots. That's about it. The subdivision meets all the subdivision rules and regulations and all zoning requirements without asking for waivers. I'd be glad to answer any questions. We ask the board to accept the plan as presented. Thank you.
I have an initial question on the engineering survey that's provided.
Yes.
You reviewed all of those?
We did. We answered each one directly, yes, and-
Okay, Aaron, in compliance. I thought you did, but I-
Yeah, we, in fact, as, after our meeting with the engineer, we responded, we revised the particulars and reviewed each item with a letter back to the engineer describing the adjustments that we made. And, yeah, following that, he had one additional adjustment which we made, and he was satisfied with the overall outcome. I'm not sure, but I think, I'm not sure if he got in touch with Charlene and discussed that.
I'll address it, yeah.
Okay.
That was the, the new calculations.
Excuse me for a minute.
Sure.
Okay. Any member of the board?
Do you want my report first?
Sure.
She was busy.
Keep doing that to you, sorry.
Do you think that's, I'm going to mess you up, Bill. Okay.
Did you get the new calculations like you passed out?
As Phil said, they've requested absolutely no waivers from anything. I think that's a first, so, good for you guys. They did submit three road names. Lexi Lane, Intrepid Way, and Celebration Way. Conservation indicated that there are wetlands in the area but not shown. Lots may be subject to conservation jurisdiction and would need to approve development in each of the lots as it moves forward. Building and highway had no concerns. Police department had no concerns. They recommended either Intrepid Way or Celebration Way as acceptable road name. Fire department had no concerns, and they indicated that Celebration Way is acceptable. Health indicated at their review that, number one, the lots may be served by town water. These are the revised ones. Yeah. Oops, sorry. Drew on you. Sorry. One, lots shall be served by town water. Two, fully compliant septic systems are required to serve the dwellings. And three, an approved environmental impact report is required to show compliance with Regulation 1.2.1.1 prior to development. That's if you're doing more than 18 bedrooms. Is that correct?
We're going to be at the 18.
You're going to be at the 18, so you don't need to do that.
Correct.
Is that my understanding? So they would have to comply fully with Items 1 and 2, and if they were going to go over 18, more than 18 bedrooms, they would have to comply with Item 3. I'm not going to go through all the town engineer's comments. The applicant has met with the town engineer, and today we did receive an email from the town engineer. These revised plans address my comments on the site plans that we discussed. The one thing I haven't received yet is Ryder's revised storm water calculations per discussion. That's what is here, and they also emailed that to the town engineer. So he is satisfied with that the applicant has met all the items that he indicated in his review. My comments, I reviewed the plan in full back in August, and at that time, I had no concerns or comments aside from what the town engineer had come up with. Board of Health conditions will need to be added to the plan prior to plan endorsement, and the recommended road name at this time is Celebration Way.
Do we have to vote that?
The road name? You do that as part of your motion generally? Yes. It's in, it's in the, as a recommended condition of approval.
Thank you, Charlene.
You're welcome.
Members of the board?
I have a question for Charlene. When does the sidewalk block come?
Five or more.
Five or more?
Yes. So this does not require a sidewalk?
Don't, don't, don't we make them?
Only if it's five or more.
Oh, if it's five or more, if they don't put-
It triggers the need for a sidewalk? It triggers the need for a sidewalk, and if they don't want to put one in, and the Board agrees, then they need to give money in lieu of-
Into the sidewalk fund.
Construction into the sidewalk fund. But this would not trigger the need for a sidewalk.
How much money in the sidewalk fund? About eighteen thousand dollars?
Uh, no, I just got that today, and I didn't look at it. So it's somewhere in there. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
It's more than fifteen and less than fifty.
Okay. Anybody on the Board have any questions of the applicant? Okay? Anybody in attendance in the audience have any questions or comments? Yes ma'am, could you just identify yourself, please?
Yeah, Marcia Kozak, and my husband Paul, we're butters to the property. Hi. Um, this may sound like a stupid question, but, the original plan that we thought, that we saw, was four eight-bedroom homes. So that would be a lot more than eighteen, right?
For what kind of bedroom, I didn't quite hear.
Four eight-bedroom homes. They, if I might, they can't do that now.
Okay, because of the septic thing?
Right.
All right, that's what, that's what our concern was, so, because of the bog and the pond, and everything else. So I guess it's, that's it.
That answer your question, ma'am?
Yeah.
Anybody else in the audience? Okay? And, uh, we have a motion to close the-
To close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So I move to, um, adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the request for panhandle lots. One lot frontage and lot width within the panhandle portion is thirty-five feet wide. Two, the length of the panhandle portion is significantly less than three hundred feet. Three, suitable access is provided within the panhandle, and the access is wide enough to otherwise satisfy for a drive, and otherwise satisfactory for a driveway. And four, the panhandle lot meets the shape number requirements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Matters allowed. Findings of fact, if you will-
So I move that we adopt the, adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the definitive subdivision. One, said subdivision for residential uses is permitted in the R-dash-R zoning district. Two, said subdivision does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, all lots demonstrate compliance with minimum dimensional requirements for frontage, area, and shape. And four, the, all Board of Health requirements shall be met, including, uh, one, that the lots, uh, shall be served by town water, and two, that fully compliant septic systems are required to serve, uh, the dwellings. And should we-
You're, you're gonna condition the, the subdivision, these are just findings of fact?
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna just add it anyway, three, an approved environmental impact report would be required, uh, to show compliance with Regulation 1.2.1.1 prior to development.
Did you do the three and four?
I did.
Okay, all right.
Yes, four is the Board of Health requirements.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, findings of fact are allowed, finally.
So I move that we approve with conditions PB 2019-29, Davenport Companies, for a four lot definitive subdivision, including one panhandle lot pursuant to Sections 325-18-Q and 400 of the Code of the Town of Howard, and Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81-K through GG, for property located at 79 Headwaters Drive, Map 81, Parcel C1, in the R-r zoning district, as shown on a plan entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan of Land, dated July 11th, 2019, prepared by Filippo Scolomidi, PLS, prepared for Davenport Companies. Scale one inch equals fifty feet. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact, and the fact that the plan meets the necessary requirements for approval and endorsement with the following conditions: One, that the Board of Health conditions, um, shall be noted on the plan prior to endorsement, and they include, one, that the lots be served by town water, two, that fully compliant septic systems are required to serve the dwellings, and three, an improved, and approved environmental impact report is required to show compliance with Regulation 1.2.1.1 prior to development. Two, that the road name shall be Celebration Way, and shall be so noted on the plan, and three, a standard planning board covenant agreement shall be executed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matter is approved. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Can I pass this back to Charlene? Pass that to her.
Excuse me. Thanks.
I have a question for Charlene.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
On these last two, handing the lots.
Yes.
Where does the front step back take it from? Take it from the coddle sack, or back at the hundred fifty foot?
Without the zoning bylaw in front of me, I can't answer that. Um, it's generally from the portion of the lot where it widens out to a certain dimension, and I can't remember what that is.
I'm wondering if it's the one hundred fifty, or the lot we have on right of the road?
It may be, it may be less than that. I think it's a percentage of the one hundred and fifty, and I, I don't have that in front of me.
Because the other plan had a dotted line going across.
Right, right. They're not required to show that, some do it, some get to include the, the panhandle portion of a lot in the shape factor, but if they can't, then they have to move out, and that's when they need to be able to include the minimum lot size requirement in the adjusted shape factor. If you can follow what I just said. Yeah. So they all do meet the requirements necessary, with the required number.
That'll be addressed when they apply for building permit.
Well, based on the approved subdivision, they meet the requirement today, and when they apply for the building permit, they will have to set back accordingly. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Not for that one. We probably should have had a dotted line going across, uh, shape.
They're, they're still gonna have to set back from, yeah.
Next matter is PB, uh, 2019-31, KNT Realty Trust, as applicant, care of John D. McElwee, PLS, Representative for Timothy M. and Kerry A. Blanchard, TRS, as owners, seek approval of a two-lot definitive subdivision with waivers, and a panhandle lot pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 325-18-Q, and Mass General Law's 41-81-K through GG. The proposal will eliminate Saltwater Lane as is shown on the land, Court Plan 11783-D. Property is located at 261014 and 0, Saltwater Lane, Map 4, Parcels A1 through 5, A1 through 9, respectively, in the R-dash-L zoning district. A matter continued from September 24th, 2019. KNT Realty Trust, are their representatives?
Uh, before he begins, Mr. Chairman, this, there was testimony taken at the August 27th meeting. Bill was not in attendance, so he would not be eligible to vote on the application, on this one. Yep.
Okay. Now, the parcel. Go ahead, sir. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening. I'm John McElwee with Coastal Engineering. Represented a plan to you, a month or so ago, uh, for two lots. The property is located on Riverside Drive, um, and on the east, it's on the Herring River. It's also between Route 28 and, uh, Lower County Road. We're proposing two lots. One has, um, adequate frontage on Riverside Drive, the second one is a panhandle lot. We have the frontage for that on Riverside Drive also. Um, they have the, uh, required area and shape. Lot 11, um, does have a panhandle width of twenty-four feet. Uh, the requirement is four thirty-five. We will be, um, approaching the zoning Board of Appeals, um, with a, an application for a, a variance on that. Um, other than that, I think, um, I said everything at the first meeting, so, if you have any questions.
Okay, members of the Board?
Can we have Charlene's staff report again?
Please.
Um, the reason that this was continued the last time is because we had not yet heard from the Board of Health. I'm not gonna go through my original comments unless you want me to, I'll go straight to Board of Health. Um, at the meeting of the Board of Health held on September 10th, a discussion took place regarding a request to consider a two-lot definitive subdivision plan prepared by Coastal Engineering, dated March 21st, 2019. Board of Health unanimously voted to approve the definitive subdivision plan request with the following conditions: One, the lot shall be served by town water; Two, fully compliant septic systems are required to serve the dwellings; Three, in preparation for municipal sewer, all building sewers shall exit the front, at the front of the building foundation. Um, I don't believe I have any new, uh, just one thing prior to endorsement on the plan, overzealousness, he put it in the water recharge area, it's not, so that will have to come off the plan before endorsement, and, um, also recommend that, you know, Board of Health, uh, conditions also be put on the plan.
And I assume when you say those kinds of things, in other words, the plan is gonna be submitted to you?
The plan, um, before you can endorse it, comes to me.
I thought, yeah.
Um, I'm actually gonna ask you to take something out of order after this, so you can endorse a plan.
Okay.
And everything that was required to be put on that plan has been put on that plan. I won't, I promise I will never, ever let you sign something that's not-
Okay. All right. Anybody else on the Board have any questions with regard to this matter? Okay? Anybody in attendance, uh, who wishes to be heard with respect to this matter? Okay?
Move to close the vote here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And did you say you wanted? You don't need anything?
No, I think it's all in staff report, so if you-
Okay.
So I move that we adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the request for the panhandle lots. One, lot frontage for the panhandle is thirty-five feet at the street. Two, a variance will be required to allow the panhandle width to be reduced to twenty-four feet. Three, the length of the panhandle portion is significantly less than, than three hundred feet. Four, suitable access is provided within the panhandle, and the access is wide enough and otherwise satisfactory for a driveway. And five, the panhandle lot meets the shape number requirements.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So I vote, I move that we adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the definitive subdivision. One, said subdivision for residential uses is permitted in the R-dash-L zoning district. Two, said subdivision does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, all lots demonstrate compliance with minimum dimensional requirements for frontage, area, and shape. And four, the Board of Health requirements shall be met, which include, uh, one, that the lots shall be served by town water; Two, fully compliant septic systems are required to serve the dwellings; And three, in preparation for the municipal sewer, all building sewer, all building sewers shall exit the front of the dwelling foundations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter is allowed. Thank you.
So, second, I'm, I move that we approve the following waivers from the subdivision rules and regulations pursuant to Section 400, Article 2. One, Section 400-10-B, plan profile and cross-section requirements. Two, Section 400-11-D, performance guarantee, bond, or covenant.
Second.
What about the balance of them? Thirteen and fourteen? Am I looking at the right one?
No, I look at something. I have one and two.
And I leave one and two.
Okay. Second?
I did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, I move that we approve with conditions, case PB 2019-31, KNT Realty Trust as applicant, and Timothy M. and Kerry A. Blanchard trustees as owners for a two-lot definitive subdivision with waivers, and a panhandle lot pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 325 dot 18-Q, and Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81-K through GG, which would eliminate Saltwater Lane as shown on a land court plan, um, 11783 dash D, for property located at 261014 and 0, Saltwater Lane, Map 4, Parcels A1, A5, A1 through A9, respectively, in the R-dash-L zoning district, and is shown on a plan entitled KNT Realty Trust, redivision of lots 5 dash 9, in Saltwater Lane, Land Court Plan 11783 dash D, showing lots 10 and 11, prepared by Coastal Engineering Company, dated March 21st, 2019, revised May 8th, 2019, scale one inch to thirty feet, Sheet C1 dot 1 dot 1. Approval is based on the aforementioned findings of fact, and the fact that the plan meets the necessary requirements for approval and endorsement with the following conditions: One, the following Board of Health restriction conditions are imposed: One, the lot shall be served by town water. Uh, one, A, the lot shall be served by town water; B, fully compliant septic systems are required to serve the dwellings; C, in preparation for municipal sewer, all building sewers shall exit the front of the dwelling foundations; Two, a planning board agreement and covenant is not required; And three, a variance from the Howard Zoning Board of Appeals shall be required for lot 10, uh, the panhandle lot-
It should be lot 11.
Lot 11, I'm sorry.
No, I'm my typo.
Shall be required for lot 11, the panhandle lot, to allow for the width to be, uh, reduced to twenty-four feet. Um, and, finally, the Board of Health conditions shall also be noted on the, on the, no, not necessary?
If you get a second, I'll explain.
Okay.
We'll get a second?
Second.
The reason, because this is a land courted plan.
Gotcha.
They'll never make it through land court, they'll be pulled off. So it's gonna be on the plan, uh, decision which would be recorded, and that's how you'd keep track of it. Of land court.
Okay.
Me too.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Matter is allowed, as stated.
Mr. Chairman, if you would so indulge me, um, if you would mind taking up under public meeting, Item B, Old Business, um, PB 2019-23, endorsement of the Edson Eldridge, um, plan.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mr. McElwee is the representative for that, so he doesn't have to stick around.
Sure. Go ahead.
We're just endorsing the-
Just with your signing of the pen.
Yep, seeking, uh, a motion to endorse the plan following the expiration of the twenty-day appeal period.
I move that we, uh, endorse the plan for-
Twenty-day appeal.
PB 2019-23, Edson Eldridge Blue Land LLC, um, following the twenty-day appeal period.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'm gonna go this way, this you can sign in just regular ink, and I'll put the dates on.
It's my contacts, my bigger friend. They're dry, I just didn't see anything.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
You need to sign with a special pen.
Yeah. Thanks.
No, on the paper you don't.
On that, oh, okay.
On the mylar, you do need the special pen, and it is important. You can't write at an angle with the pen, you do have to hold the pen really up and down.
Does it matter?
No, it doesn't matter which, wherever it's easiest.
Thank you.
And even if you weren't here to vote on approving the plan, it doesn't matter for the endorsement, you're endorsing simply that it has expired the twenty days with no appeal.
I see the agenda for a second. Just tell your agenda for a second.
Okay.
Yeah. These are just for our records. And Duncan, you can leave that right there. That's okay. It's all right. It's okay.
Put the marsh matter on the bottom of the, of the list, because you generally show up over the later.
No, it's chronology.
I, I know that. Camilla, sir?
Yes, thank you for the board's indulgence on that.
Uh, next matter is, uh, PB two thousand nineteen thirty-four. Martin D. Rich care of Timothy Brady, PLS, and PE. He's representative, seek approval of a seven lot, one with a panhandle, the definitive subdivision pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter forty-one, eighty-one K and G through G G and three twenty-five, eighteen Q and four hundred of the Com- Towne of Harwich. Property located at zero Deacon Folly's Road, map forty-six, parcel F five, within the RL zoning district. No new or additional roads are proposed. Matter continued from September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'm Tim Brady from East Cape Engineering. And, um, like the previous one, the only reason that this plan is being filed as a subdivision plan is because it does contain one panhandle. All the other lots have our frontage on, uh, Deacon's Folly Road. All the lots meet the, uh, area requirements and the shape factor requirements. There are adjacent wetlands, uh, that are shown on the plan. We have, uh, met with the Board of Health and they have reviewed and approved the, um, proposed, uh, lots with some restrictions, uh, the same as you've been applying to the other lots. Uh, we are asking for waivers of, uh, all of the road construction requirements. And we will provide a covenant with the only condition on the covenant being that, uh, concrete monuments will be set on the property corners prior to the release of the lots. And I think that's it. I'll answer any questions?
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Charlie?
Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Um, what I, I handed out to you is in my staff report. I was reviewing everything this afternoon and I realized I left out the vote regarding the waivers. So at the bottom of page two, it says new in red, and that would be the waivers. Uh, there, there is no road being proposed, so no road names are required. The town engineer, um, has indicated that granite and concrete bounds shall be placed at all lot corners and that would be the only requirement on the covenant. The drainage design for the proposed development of the individual lot shall be designed to maintain drainage on each lot to the maximum extent practicable. Um, and the third is, there is a twenty-five-foot area delineated on lot four adjacent to Deacon Folly Road. What is the area intended to be? I, I'm guessing it's.
That's just to demonstrate, the, the zoning requirements, uh, say that the, the lot has to be eighty percent of the frontage.
Yeah.
Twenty-five feet back. So that line is just to show that that lot, uh, meets the frontage require, requirement.
Thank you. Uh, conservation lots two through seven, uh, are subject to conservation review and will have to comply with the sixty-foot no-build zone from the edge of a wetland. In some cases, this greatly reduces the buildable area of the lot. Conservation has no issue with the subdivision, but future development may be limited and potential plans, um, should be discussed with the conservation department. That would be on a lot-by-lot basis as they are developed. Fire, police, building, and highway have no concerns. Health Department at the meeting of the Board of Health held September tenth, the discussion took place regarding a request to consider the seven-lot subdivision planned prepared by East Cape Engineering. Plans dated July twenty-four, two thousand nineteen, and August twenty-eight, two thousand nineteen. The Board of Health unanimously voted to approve the definitive subdivision plan request with the following conditions. One, an environmental impact review shall, uh, be submitted and approved by the Board of Health as required by regulation one point two one one. Two, the lot shall be served by town water. Three, no development of lots will be approved until the environmental impact review has been approved by the Board of Health. Four, no variances from title five will be allowed. Five, in preparation for municipal sewer, all building sewers shall exit the front of the building foundation. Uh, my comments. On August thirteenth, I did review the application in full. At that time, the following comments were shared, um, with Tim Brady. Uh, item twenty-seven, you requested a waiver from the crime covenant, that's been addressed. Um, as discussed, Board of Health restrictions will be need to noted on the plan. Um, eight, marked area subject to Wetlands, um, Protection Act and Conservation. He's addressed that. Um, and then I couldn't find a benchmark, but it, it's not critical because there's no road being established here. I do recommend that comments regarding drainage design on the individual lots be noted as a condition. And that is all I have.
What about the Board of Health conditions?
And that those also be, um, those would be, that is a recommended condition. Board of Health restriction conditions shall be noted in the plan prior to plan endorsement.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Members of the board.
I just have a question, uh, conservation, they say lots two through seven, why do three and four have to be included?
The, uh, just a small portion of lot three and lot four are within a hundred feet.
The little dash line?
Uh, no, actually, um.
It's, it's a squiggle line?
Yeah, on the left, yeah.
On the left?
Intersection of two.
Yeah, right there.
Hundred feet would come up. From the edge of the bog.
Yes.
Thank you.
So it does encroach into lot three.
Anybody else?
I have a question, what about the, um, sand pits?
Those are little burrow pits, uh, that have been there for years for the, when it was a primary bog.
Now, those, the primary, whoever owns primary bog, do they have sand rights still?
They don't. I believe they don't.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I believe he's correct that they do not. And if they do, then they're, they still have their rights.
Yes.
But I don't think there are any rights to those particular sand, um.
So what I'm asking is, should we somehow eliminate these dotted land lines for the pit for those lots?
I thought that it was.
Nobody can use it as a sand pit again?
I think just removing them from a plan doesn't make that happen.
So what should we do?
Um.
If they do have the sand rights?
Nothing.
Nothing.
So buyer beware?
Oh, you mean for the, for the buyer of lot two?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's right, buyer beware for that.
Buyer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, hopefully the guy that does the title.
Exactly.
Finds that.
Find it.
Right.
Yeah.
If it's there, in, in, in the registry of deeds.
Right, right.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody on the board have any other further questions? Okay, anybody in the audience have any questions with respect to, uh, this matter? Do I have a motion to close the, oops, sorry, go ahead?
I have a question for Charlene.
Yes.
Charlene, um, as far as the engineering notes concerned, um, is your condition two, proposed condition two under, under B sufficient to cover all of, um, Mister Ryder's?
Uh, yes, we actu- that, he and I came up with that language together.
Good, thanks.
Okay. Go ahead.
May I just close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I move that, uh, we adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the request for a panhandle lots. Uh, one, lot frontage and lot width within the panhandle portion is thirty-five feet wide. Two, the length of the panhandle portion is significantly less than three hundred feet. Three, suitable access is provided within the panhandle and the access is wide enough and otherwise satisfactory for a driveway. Four, the panhandle lot meets the shape number requirements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Go ahead.
Move that we adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the definitive subdivision. One, said subdivision for residential uses is permitted in the R dash L zoning district. Two, said subdivision does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, all lots demonstrate compliance with minimum dimensional requirements for frontage, area, and shape. And four, the Board of Health requirements shall be met and just because I've been doing it for everybody else. Um, one, an environmental. An environmental impact, uh, review be submitted and approved by the Board of Health as required by regulation one dot two one one. Two, the lot shall be served by town water. Three, no development of the lots will be approved until the environmental impact review has been approved by the Board of Health. Four, no variance from, no variances from title five will be allowed. And five, in preparation for municipal sewer, all building sewers shall exit the front of the dwelling foundations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally?
And finally, um, I move that we approve the following waivers. Subdivision rules and regulations pursuant to section four hundred, article two. One, section four hundred dash ten dash B, plan profiling, cross-section requirements. Two, for, section four hundred dash eleven dash D, performance guarantee bond or covenant. Three, section four hundred, um, appendix four B, subdivision filing and plan requirements. Line item thirty-seven, waiver to provide topographic site plan at two-foot intervals.
Wait.
Yes?
Can you take out item B because they are doing a planning board covenant that will be only for the installment of the bounds? So they do not need a waiver from that because they will be complying with that.
So let me res- let me rescind and revise my motion, it hasn't been seconded yet. So one, we adopt or approve the waivers, um, section four hundred dash ten dash B, plan profile and cross-section requirements. And two, section four hundred, appendix four B, subdivision filing and plan requirements. Line thirty, line item thirty-seven, waiver to provide topographic site plan at two-foot intervals.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, um, I move that we approve with conditions, PB two zero one nine dash thirty-four, Martin D. Rich for a seven-lot definitive subdivision including one panhandle lot pursuant to sections three twenty-five dash eighteen Q and four hundred of the Code of Towne of Harwich and Mass General Law, chapter forty-one, sections eighty-one K through J G, through G G for property located at zero Deacon's Folly Road, map forty-six, parcel F five, within the R dash L zoning district as shown on a plan entitled Plan of Land, Deacon's Folly Road, being a division of lots, of lot one shown in plan book three one seven, page eighteen, dated July twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, prepared by Timothy J. Brady, PLS from Martin D. Rich, scale one inch equals forty feet. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the plan meets the necessary requirements for approval and endorsement with the following conditions. One, the Board of Health restrictions and conditions shall be noted on the plan prior to the plan endorsement. And two, the drainage design for the proposed development of the individual lots shall be designed to maintain drainage on each property to the maximum extent practicable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matter is allowed, thank you.
Uh, thank you all very much. Uh, I'd also like to mention that I think this is a really well-run board. You all seem to be familiar with the regulations and with the plans and stick to the topic. And, um, I note that and I appreciate that, that was very nice. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, last matter on the agenda. Um, uh, PB two thousand nineteen, thirty-six Deerfield Nominee Trust, William Marsh trustee as owner seeks approval of a site plan review special permit with waivers for new construction of a five thousand eight hundred and forty-five square-foot metal structure for individual, and for industrial use. The property is located at Fort Deerfield Road, map forty-five, parcel T one dash seven, in the IL zoning district. Application is pursuant to the Code of the Towne of Harwich, three twenty-five fifteen, three twenty-five fifty-one, and fifty-five. Matter has been continued from September twenty-fourth. Mister Marsh or his representative?
Good evening, Susan Ladue from Eastward Companies.
Did we get anything from engineering? I'm having a brain cramp.
Last, last week, you emailed that to me?
Yes, we did, thank you, sorry.
No, that's okay. Uh, we've been here several times before over the last year, but so I'm, but I'm going, since this is a new hearing, I'm going to go through and review the entire, so if you bear with me.
Thank you.
Thank you. This, uh, four.
I agree, the record should reflect that.
Exactly, exactly. Four Deerfield Road is a twenty thousand seventy-six square-foot vacant lot in the Deerfield Road subdivision with two hundred seventy-three point forty-three feet of frontage on Deerfield Road and Deacon Street in North Harwich. This lot was created with the definitive subdivision plan approved by the planning board in nineteen eighty-nine. This is a corner lot in the subdivision located on a curve. A five thousand eight hundred forty-five square-foot industrial slash metal building is proposed that will accommodate warehouse of storage use. Seven parking spaces are proposed where six spaces are required for the proposed use. The previously proposed four spaces, if you were, you're here for the previous meetings, the previously proposed four spaces that backed out on two Deerfield Road have been eliminated from this proposal. So there's no longer that issue. The previously proposed ninety-foot-wide driveway opening has been removed also, and I believe that was a, a sticking point with the earlier plan, has been removed and two forty-foot wide openings are now proposed. An approximately thirty to thirty-five-foot-wide grasscrete island is proposed between the two openings to create a green barrier between the openings, but will also allow for additional parking area drainage and can be driven over to allow for additional maneuvering area if necessary. We and our future owners of the building will maintain the grasscrete island. And, uh, just to note, I did submit a brochure of sorts with, with the filing package if you wanted more information on grasscrete, if you weren't familiar with it. Building coverage of twenty-nine point one percent is proposed where a maximum of forty percent is allowed. Site coverage of fifty-nine point five percent is proposed where a maximum of seventy percent is allowed. This includes the building, walkways, parking, maneuvering areas, and the proposed grasscrete island. The site coverage has decreased from our previous proposal with the elimination of the four parking spaces. Green space of forty point five percent is proposed where a minimum of thirty percent is required and the green space is increased for the same reason. We are requesting three waivers of the planning board requirements. Section three twenty-five dash forty-two, parking spaces less than the required fifteen feet from the street lot line. Several spaces, uh, on the west side of the property and the east side of the property are shown to be five feet, uh, from the street lot line, uh, but more than fifteen feet from the edge of the road pavement. So we, we feel that this is not, um, anything that creates a nuisance, uh, to that lot or traffic problems or the rest of the, uh, properties on the road. Three twenty-five dash forty, required loading area for service vehicles for five thousand square-foot building. Uh, because of the proposed use as a warehouse or storage, we do not anticipate the need for a loading area in the rear of the building and any items stored can be taken through the overhead garage doors. Three twenty-five dash four, outside area for disposal container. We've added a note, and I think it was requested at previous, uh, meetings or in reports, that if we were not ha- proposing a dumpster on the site, we added a note to the site plan that all trash shall be contained within the building. And we feel that a dumpster is not needed, uh, for this use. And we understand that if we do want to have a dumpster in the future, we need to come back for, uh, future site plan approval by the board. Landscape plan, building elevation and floor plans, uh, the grasscrete information and drainage calculation, calculations were submitted with the submittal package. And on seven thirty-one nineteen, the ZBA granted a variance for the rear building setback of twenty-five point two feet where fifty-foot setback is required. And, um, just to follow up on what Charlene was, uh, asking about the town engineer's report. I, I can address those now, or do you want to wait till you read his comments and I can address those then? I'll be happy.
It's your pleasure.
Um, I don't know, I, I am now recalling that you all got a copy of the town engineer's comments dated October third. Attach them to mine. Whatever's the board, whatever the board's pleasure is on that.
Sure, sure. Uh, so we received the town engineer's, uh, comments and, and, uh, just to follow up, he had a previous, um, report that was lengthy and had lots of comments. And we revised some information and, and answered, uh, his questions. And he came back with six comments, uh, from last week. And, uh, the first one dealt with the letters on the building on the site plan. Just to address, I think, they aren't necessarily, if you look at the site plan, it says A, B, and C. They're not necessarily unit identifiers. Therefore, the, uh, as explained to me by Clark Engineering, it's where the septic lines come in. Therefore, the, as explained to me by Clark Engineering, it's where the septic lines come in for possible future bathrooms. So those are the identifiers for the septic line coming in, and not necessarily units because we're not proposing to divide up the building at all at this time. It's one big building. So I just wanted to address that because I think that was a question and a little confusing. So there's a question about the parking spaces impacting access to the overhead doors in front of what he was referring to as Units B and C. And then recommended that if that was a problem, that he recommended that those spaces be dedicated to those units. So our feeling is, we see this as basically warehouse or storage. We don't see there, there as being a problem. I don't know that even all these spaces will be used, but if there's a car, we'll move a car and someone can get inside that overhead door. Or otherwise, we'll agree with his recommendation and we'll dedicate the spaces. We'll be happy to do that. Regarding the question about the 24-foot parking aisle width dimension, the grasscrete island can serve as additional backup maneuvering area if needed. I believe he was saying that in front of Unit B, so-called, the backup area measured 20 feet instead of the required 24 for the aisle. And, you know, either we'll, we'll agree to request a waiver or our feeling is that's what the grasscrete island is for, to back up on. And if, you know, you're satisfied with that, we're happy with that. Otherwise, I will request the waiver if you want to see us address it that way. We've spoken with David Clark, our engineer, who feels that sufficient radiating numbers. And that, this was on the previous engineer's report, excuse me. They're making noise. And he had asked for radii to be shown, which they are, where the R equals 25, if you look on each side of the driveway opening. And I guess in his second report, he's asked for more. David Clark feels that we've addressed the planning board's regs as far as radii. We can add those to the construction drawings as recommended by the town engineer if he wants more at that point. But we felt sufficient, or at least David Clark feels it's sufficient, the information provided. David Clark, our engineer, has indicated that surface materials will be determined later. And that was a question that Mr. Ryder had. He said it wasn't noted on the plan and we haven't, it's not set in stone yet, so to speak, what we're using as the surface material, most likely bituminous concrete. It's just going to be paved. Any walkway will be paved. And then the rest will be grass, landscape material, and then the grasscrete will be its own. But I, I don't see it as being a mashup of different surfaces at all. We would usually pave the parking area. And so we can, if you want that added, we can add it. But we, we like to leave it as it is. And then Mr. Ryder's also requested that the existing catch basins, and I'm assuming he means on Deerfield Road, I don't know if that's your understanding, Charlene, that we have silt trap, traps inserted into those as well as into the proposed catch basins. And we're happy to do that, as he's recommended or suggested. And then the last item, I asked David Clark about that, and it had to do with the separation to groundwater, the leaching and the drainage system there. And David does not know of any requirement of a four-foot separation to groundwater, but has indicated that the bottom of the leaching is at elevation 15.5 or 5.5 feet above estimated groundwater, which efficiently address this concern. So that's my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Members of the board, anybody have any questions? We've all had a chance to look at this for a while now. Go ahead.
Yeah, previously you had an opening from Deerfield Road of about 93 feet.
Yes.
You now have two 40-foot openings with essentially a grasscrete that whether it's maintained with grass or not, you can drive right over it. It's essentially the same level surface. So it seems to me that you've now got, instead of a 93-feet opening, you've got a 103-foot opening. The fact that it's grasscrete doesn't change the fact that it's an opening that people can drive in anywhere through that 100-foot opening that they want to and out the same way.
And probably will.
Pardon me?
And probably will.
Yes. So I, you know, I'm really struggling with how this complies with the requirements of the town.
I, I think it was, you know, and we've admitted that it's, you know, to help with maneuvering if there are trucks with trailer or a boat. And we have a lot of people who store boats. And if that's the case, we want them to be able to maneuver. Anyone else coming in, I think they'll see, I don't want to say a visual barrier, but they'll see the green and they'll respect it as a landscape barrier. I think that's the way we were viewing it and why we proposed it. Rather than a landscape island that's getting run over constantly. We just didn't want to-
No, I thank you for your explanation and the rationale. But I respectfully expect that people will drive over it anytime they want, whether they're need maneuvering area or it's just a convenient place to pull in and pull out.
Okay. Members of the board, go ahead.
I, I don't think people will drive over grassed areas in mode. Don't think it's a lawn, that's what it's going to look like.
I have, I have seen-
I've seen a lot too, so.
I've seen grasscrete in many areas. It's used extensively in parking areas, large parking lots to allow the surface water to drain between the pieces into the voids in the concrete. It's-
Normally used in place of asphalt.
I don't see, I haven't seen any of them where there's a lot of grass growing up through it. But one, one place that I've seen it is in Pleasant in California, in the Fairgrounds. And it's, the whole area is paved with this. And it's, it's pretty much brown dirt separated by little pieces of concrete.
Am I picturing this correctly, that this would be like squares of concrete, but the grass would come up within the squares? I've seen that. Oh, I haven't, I didn't have-
This is the promotional brochure.
Yeah.
On a good day, that's what it looks like.
So David, is your concern that there'll be kind of vehicular chaos?
No.
If there's a temptation to move over and move around grass?
If the town doesn't permit openings that wide.
Right.
There's a reason for it.
Right.
I'm not sure exactly what the reason is. Maybe Charlene can clarify.
My guess is to limit mass openings and mass asphalt in relation to roadways.
Yeah, if, if, if the rationale for it is simply not to have a sea of asphalt, then this complies.
And, and there is a safety component in that.
That was mine because if you had people turning left and turning right and there's this huge, I mean-
Where do you enter, where do you-
Right, all of a sudden you got a couple of car lengths and you got a problem.
Did, did you want my report?
Yes, I would.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. So this is for us and everybody out there, a brand-new application that you're finally seeing. You had seen it before it was withdrawn, so this is brand-new. Conservation, building, police, highway, water, and fire have no concerns. Health indicated that the application, the applicant has not yet applied for disposal system construction permit. However, the site plan indicates a fully compliant system will be installed. If floor drains are to be installed, they are not allowed to connect to the drainage or septic system and must be plumbed to an industrial holding tank. The comments were reviewed by Susan from the town engineer. I'm not going to reiterate those. With regard to my comments, and many of those refer to a memo that was submitted when they made the reapplication. And I had my thumb there and it slipped. Hold on one second. Doesn't make sense unless... So on September 17, a cover letter with information was provided by Susan as part of the application. In my review of the applicant's, the application responses on the September 17 narrative, I offer the following. And I, I'm going to read their response than mine, otherwise it doesn't make a whole lot of sense unless you do them both. The three proposed parking spaces perpendicular to and in front of proposed garage bay at Units B and, I'm guessing it's supposed to be C, can be reserved for these units, but we don't anticipate issues. Any cars in these spaces can be moved if someone needs to access the garage bay. My response is that I'm not sure this adequately responds to the concerns of allowing parking in front of bay doors. And how will this not impede access to those doors? I, I still don't feel that that has been adequately addressed. Their response, number three, the three proposed parking spaces along the west side of the property can be reserved for Unit A. The two northernmost spaces have been shifted to the west to be five feet from the lot line to include in the setback waiver and reduce the note. My comment is, it refers to Unit A. However, there is no Unit A, as noted either on the building plan or the plan. I am seeing a teeny-tiny little A marked, and I'm guessing that's what that is, but I'm only seeing that now. Their comment, number seven, the owner of the building will be responsible for the maintenance for the grasscrete service treatment. My response is, this states the owner shall be responsible for the maintenance of the grasscrete. And I go on to say, the grasscrete island is located primarily within the road right-of-way and therefore is not part of the green space. The grasscrete provided is, it is maintained properly, and I think this goes to David's comments. Could be an adequate island, however, in most instances, they are not maintained adequately, at least ones that I've seen. D, a waiver has been requested for the parking spaces that do not meet the 15-foot setback, four spaces in total. The board will need to expressly authorize, authorize to approval of these spaces. In my opinion, the waiver is reasonable. I, I don't have an issue with that. They've also requested a waiver for the loading area requirement based on the narrative provided. Again, I do believe that this is a reasonable request. There is a waiver request for the dumpster. However, there's no reasoning provided. The bylaw says you need to provide reasoning. Sometimes it's just kind of intuitive. A note has been added to the plan to indicate no dumpsters shall be allowed on the site until such time as a revised plan is submitted to the planning board. And until such time as all trash shall be contained within the building and disposed of properly. G, the parking calculations are based solely on warehousing with no employees. However, the August 14 narrative speaks to the tenant-owner having a desk in the office space. This would constitute an employee, which would require an additional parking space. They do provide seven, so in theory, the seven should be adequate for the warehouse and the one employee. H, any use other than warehouse would need to come back to the planning board for further review and other department review for determination as to whether the parking and other features are appropriate for the proposed use. The building did receive a variance from the zoning board of appeals to allow for a 25-foot rear setback, and I'm recommending that this should be noted in your decision. I do want to let you know that we did receive a letter from a gentleman named Thomas Evans. He lives at 90 Great Western Road, a few hundred yards to the east and just over the Herring River from the Deerfield Road subdivision. For many years, I've watched the properties evolve- Thank you, evolution from wooded knoll to virtual sand pit and now to light industry development. As a property owner and resident of North Harwich, I feel that anything that can be done to clean up this corner will only enhance the area, which along with Route 28, a few miles to the house, it, south is the main welcome-to-Harwich statement to visitors and residents alike arriving from west of the town. Therefore, given Mr. Marsh's assurances that he intends to clean it up and build his usual high standard, I support this request for site plan approval. And that is all I have for now.
Can you look at the plan? Do you have the plan?
Yes.
Is the item marked number two in front of what I would describe as the middle unit, is that a parking spot?
Two parking spots.
Oh, it's two.
There are two parking-
Oh, that's why it says two.
Parking spaces, yes.
Okay, all right.
You can see the, the curb wheel stops.
I do now. Okay. And they have a handicap one over on the right-hand side there.
Yes, and three on the industrially side.
Okay.
Which have been kind of stepped, and I think that's fine.
Oh, isn't that less than what you initially submitted? What did you originally have?
That's not before you anymore, so this is a brand-new application.
Right.
Okay. All right. So you changed. Ma'am?
Remember, here the back-out faces?
Yeah.
So if I may, through you, Mr. Chair to Charlene, your notes talk about warehousing. To me, warehousing and storage are very different things. So I don't know, so I wanted to clarify that on our, on our zoning ordinance, on our zoning bylaw. Because to me, warehousing is warehousing for, you know, for third-party in and out. And that's very different from storage or boat storage or, you know-
If I might, the definition of warehousing is a storage of goods and materials by the owner of the goods or operated for the specific commercial establishment or good of establishments in the particular industrial or economic field, which shall not include the bulk storage of nuclear or radioactive products or toxic waste chemicals. Such use may include the transportation of such goods or materials by motor freight. So it can be used as storage for materials that are being warehoused. It's not a, it's not a storage facility in, like, you rent a little-
So our definition doesn't fall under, under what I'd consider a Uniform Commercial Code warehousing, which is, you know, Home Depot has a warehouse.
Right.
Third-party warehouse.
It's a storage of goods and materials.
There's a third-party warehouse that's, that's, that's doing bills of lading in, in and outs for retailers.
Yep. Storage of goods and materials by the owner of the goods or operated for a specific commercial establishment or group of establishments.
Thank you.
Members of the board, okay, anybody in attendance? No, you don't have anything to say? All right. Motion to close the public hearing?
Or do you, are you ready to do that?
So, so I have a couple of other questions, if I may, Mr. Chair.
What's the question?
The engineer's notes. It, it doesn't, it doesn't feel to me like everything's been addressed yet. Do we, I know you've, I know you've made comments back. I just don't know whether, is he in agreement with-
He has not heard the responses provided this evening.
Okay.
If I were to weigh in, I do think that there needs to be a discussion between the applicant, the town engineer, and possibly myself to, you know-
So that was, that was where my concern was going.
Is he comfortable with the responses provided this evening?
So that was just where I was going. I didn't know if he had, if you had had that conversation and that we just didn't have further updates. If that's the case, I'd prefer to postpone till the next meeting so that it gives the parties an opportunity to, to follow up. And just so that we can get a final blessing from engineering that says, yep, it all makes sense.
But we've complied.
Well, we've, we've agreed, I mean, I went through and we've agreed to do basically everything that he's requested.
But some of them are still alternates. You, you didn't want to dedicate-
Like what?
Because they're not, because they're not units. So you would dedicate them if you had to. So that, that's, those are just the things that I think need to be cleared up before we can finalize.
And if there are changes that are needed on the plan itself, those need to-
Right.
Contingent upon.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm happier with, with this plan than I was at the last. I just want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
I think Bill was just asking, would you be able to devote to approve it?
Contingent upon approval by your town engineer.
I don't, I don't know that we've set a precedent for that.
I'm not a proponent of that.
We're not going to do that. Okay, anybody else on the board? Go ahead. Okay, anybody else on the board, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question for Charlene. Do you consider the two 40-foot openings with grasscrete medium in, in the center between them? To make that, that that is compliant with all the requirements of the town of Harwich?
I don't know. I mean, if, if the board is satisfied that this constitutes an island and separates the two entrances, then I would go along with you on that. If you feel it's not, I could go, I, I'm not really making a judgment call one way or the other, except to say, if it is not maintained in good, in a good state, it, it's going to revert to dirt. And then, yes, you will have a hundred-plus-foot opening.
Actually, all due respect, I've never seen them revert to dirt, but what happens is, it's a series of cement blocks, basically, and, and the grass comes up through them. Not, not through the cement, obviously, but through the.
In, in the voids.
That's right.
Right, but if it's not maintained, it's not watered, it's not fertilized.
It mean, it needs to be maintained almost like a lawn.
That's right.
I mean, it really.
Not almost, it needs to be maintained like a lawn.
Can't you put a condition in that says that?
We could.
Have I ever done anything other than what I've represented that I would do?
No. Okay, members of the board.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Just trying to, our next meeting is?
The 22nd.
So, we're talking two weeks?
Talking two weeks, and Monday's a holiday.
So, there is, there is a selectmen's meeting.
On the 15th.
On the 15th. So, is, is two weeks sufficient to?
I don't know what the townier, town engineer's schedule is like, and I'm out on Friday.
I understand, okay. I'm just trying not to tie them up longer than, than necessary.
Exactly.
But, but I'd just like to know that the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed. You've been before us too many times, you've had to go to too many places.
Only been since last December.
Understood.
But.
Understood, but that doesn't change the fact that we want to still do it right. And I, I just.
And this is a new application.
Nothing but doing it right.
Reminder to the board, this is a new application.
Correct, understood.
And the hearing, this is the first time the board has seen this, this particular application. We did not have enough to move forward at the last meeting because we had absences.
Understood.
Okay, what's the convenience of, what does the board want to do? You want to continue it?
I would like to continue it for, for two weeks in the hopes that.
I recognize you for a motion.
I move that we, date again?
October 22nd.
Move that we continue the public hearing to October 22nd, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Yep. Generally, I'd get you a staff report at least a week before on any revisions. I probably won't be able to have that, but I don't want that to hold them up. So, you may not receive our report until the night of the meeting, or at least maybe even the Monday before the meeting. Are you guys okay with that?
That's fine, with me, I don't know with the rest of you.
If you need another month or two weeks, we're okay. It'll be almost a year.
Okay.
I guess, the only thing we're really concerned with is the island, is that correct?
That's what I hear.
The island, for me, the engineering notes.
What did you hear?
That, that the, seems the only item of concern is this grass cement island.
No, and the, no, she wants to be sure the town engineer's comments have been addressed.
Okay.
The town engineer is comfortable with the way they've addressed his comments.
Right.
I think he's, they've made the comments, they've, they've made some changes, I just want to know that it's blessed.
Okay, I'm sure we'll hear from him. Alright, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. It seemed like when you were going through the six or so.
Just, I'm sorry, just a point of order, you did vote to continue this hearing? Do you want to reopen it so that you can have further discussion?
Do you?
I just don't want people to be out of order.
Reopen the public meeting?
No, no, we didn't close the public meeting.
No, we, we continued it, though.
But you did vote to continue it, and you voted.
So, I'll move to, I'll move to reopen the.
We, it just, you know, I don't want anybody to come back and say, but you guys kept talking about it.
We'll reopen the public hearing.
You moved to reopen the public hearing?
Correct.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
It, it seemed to me as we were, you were going through the bullet points that a number of them, I didn't write them down, but probably at least half, you said, we will comply exactly what the engineer has recommended. So, in, in looking at these, as we've just been having this discussion, it seems like there's maybe two items on here that, I guess the engineer, or some people on, on the board want to have the engineer look at again and hear your answer to it again, but it isn't, or I guess I would ask Mary, is your intent that they need to go through all of the, the bullet points that he's raised, even though they've already testified here in the hearing, that they're going to comply exactly with what he said?
So, my comment is that that's been expressed to us, not to the town engineer, and they are the town engineer's notes. So, generally speaking, staff should have the opportunity to say, okay, yes, it's been addressed.
And in some cases, it may need to be a condition of approval, but we need to know which ones.
And he, and it may be fine with leaving B and C and how it is, or not dedicating parcels to a Pacific Bay. But I just, I think standard operating procedure is for staff to be able to say, yes, it's, it's been addressed.
And some of these may be just a note on the drawing?
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I, I think that frustration is expressed on our part because we didn't receive the first comments from the town engineer until it was too late for us to respond and, and then to receive the second ones last Thursday. And for us to, you know, consume and digest those. Yeah, I'm not putting blame on anyone, but it's been frustrating on our part, trying to respond as quickly as we can to get to the meeting. Yeah, so.
We've moved to continue it for two weeks, hopefully.
So, we got to move again, now we have to move to continue the public hearing until Tuesday, October?
22nd.
22nd.
No sooner than 6:30.
No sooner than 6:30 PM.
Second?
Second, yeah, we already, we're doing that again, right?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
That is continued.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And we need to hear from the historical district commission.
No, that is just the, you have a copy of the notices that were, that are on the October 16th hearing. There is a notice of intent, which is a demolition permit request for a property at 1 Fips Lane. And there is a certificate of appropriateness, it's for 729 Main Street, for a ground-mounted sign. And there is a notice of intent for 232 Bank Street, which is, it's.
Replacing a trim.
Again, a demolition, it's again a request for a demolition permit on a 100-year-old house to replace siding and trim. So, I don't think there's anything there that the planning board is really interested in seeking.
That material is from your, your agenda.
That is, that is, those are the posted applications for next week.
For your, for your.
So, this is seeking planning board comment, if any.
For the rest of you, if you don't know, I'm the chairperson, that's why I talk about it as hers.
That is all it is.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything really important for this board, nothing.
Any briefings and reports by board members?
I will say, as Charlene has one too, but I will jump in and say, I'm the, as most of you know, I'm the rep to the community preservation committee. We have received applications, the due date was October 1st. We are having our first meeting since the submission of those applications. It is Thursday night. If anybody is interested in attending, I, I encourage you to attend. We have, I believe it's 12 applications, and there is quite a significant amount of money being sought this year. To answer Joe's standard question, I'm not sure that there's enough money to, to cover all the applications this time. So, if anyone has any interest, we meet at 6:00 PM on Thursday here in this room. And this, it will start the whole round, we probably won't vote until late December or January, I suspect, but.
So, you, you must have a lot of apps.
We have 12, I believe, I believe the number was 12. And there are some significant dollar amounts on some of those applications, so.
And what was your distribution?
I don't know yet.
Hasn't, hasn't come out yet.
I believe it's about, I believe we have about, total, I think it was about 2.5. But that would also have to cover the debt service on it as well.
As your representative of capital outlay, we met this afternoon, feels like I'm going to live in this town hall pretty soon.
Me too, me three.
And we're about three-quarters of the way through on the various capital requests. I have to say that I've sat on that board for, like this board, for a lot of years. And the current town administrator makes dealing with those capital requests and, and information just a walk in the park compared to what we struggled through in the past. He's, he's very, very competent and very, he, he provides us with everything we need in order to be able to, to carry out our job. I, I have in front of me, or you should all have, a notice of the Cape Cod Commission hearing date of October 22nd. Do you know what time it is, Charlene?
5 o'clock, here in this room.
Okay.
If I might, a few of us were at the meeting last week before the Cape Cod Commission, and they did vote to accept the concept of the nomination. And what this hearing on the 22nd will be is, I think it's actually a subcommittee of the commission that will hear from the public and then make their recommendations to the full commission on whether or not to recommend it as a full DCPC. And then it will go to staff to do, write up all the legislation. And then it would go to the Assembly of Delegates for ratification. And then the town, we have the opportunity, and we're not waiting for all them to do it. We're going to start looking at zoning changes sooner rather than later. Because regardless of whether there's the DC, whether the DCPC nomination goes through or not, there's some zoning changes that we need to really look at for that area, so.
Is, is the entire commission going to be here on the 22nd, or just that subcommittee?
I think it's the subcommittee, but don't hold me to that. I'm, I'm not entirely sure. I mean, there.
Too many of them to get in.
Oh, yeah, there's, there were 16 people there, and I think there were two people not there.
Right.
And it was a unanimous vote.
Yay.
Yep.
It should have been, they're the ones who asked us for it.
Well, there's staff, and then there's the commission, keep in mind, it's like.
I understand.
You're the planning board, I'm not, so.
Everybody get a calendar?
I'm, we're going to discuss this at the next meeting, I don't want to discuss it tonight, but I want you to have it, right, in hand.
Okay.
One of the things, this is for having meetings on Tuesday. If you look to the next page, it's very colorful, I hope you're not colorblind. Green would be the normal meetings, and some do need to be on Thursdays because of holidays and elections. There has been some chatter, discussion of the possibility of changing the meetings to Thursday nights. So, those are the orange blobs on here. So, just something for us to talk about at the next planning board meeting.
Okay. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think we blew by old business, or if we did, I, I missed it. But under old business.
We had conducted that, so that's why I didn't think there was any other old business. If there is, go ahead.
Surprise. Back in, and we've had a very busy, to say the least, last couple of months. But back on July 30th, I had asked to put a sort of protocol and procedures discussion on the agenda, on a future agenda to discuss protocols and process and procedures. And I think that was Chairman Joyce's last meeting, so we had changed there. And then, as everybody knows, what else has been going on. And then I did follow up on August 13th, and at that point, Charlene indicated that she, the chairman, and I should get together or would get together at some time so that you felt comfortable in putting something together.
Well, we need to know what we're talking about.
Right, and so, we were going to do that. And nothing has been scheduled yet, and again, I know we've been very busy, but I don't want to lose sight of it. There could be things that come up in the future that we, that this might be, this conversation might be impacting. And so, I'm just, again, pleading or asking that it be put on some future agenda. But I think if your request still holds true, Charlene, you and I and the chairman should get together. And the last I heard was you were going to coordinate that, should I reach out to you guys? How, how do we?
If you guys want to figure out a time that meets, that works for you two and get in touch with me, we'll.
We'll figure some time out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ellen.
Thank you very much.
You would be interested, I don't mean to point at you, but you would be interested that the board of selectmen last night had some things to say about people participating in meetings through the.
Remote participation?
Remote participation.
What did they say?
Basically, I think, would like to stop it if they could, but they didn't quite get to that point. But that was the, that was the discussion.
So, I can sell my place in Florida and stay here all the time?
I guess, yeah, yeah. Well, actually, it was, it was a former, what, he was a former chairman of this, of this committee, wasn't he, Larry?
Yeah, did they approve his doing that, or?
They did, but.
Reluctantly. Yeah, that's what brought up the discussion.
But I think, David, you typically do the same thing every year, correct, and request remote participation? So, there are a couple of comments that were made at the meeting.
And one, one of the comments that was made was that if they didn't use folks like yourself to be members of volunteer committees like this, they wouldn't have any people to do it.
Well, the pool would be smaller, of course.
Yeah. Okay, anything further?
I have a.
Sure?
I will not be here on the 19th of November.
You said you might be a maybe on that, so now you know, okay.
You going shooting again? Okay, motion adjourned?
Do you want to call in?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.